Meg, are you comfortable out there? We'll move on to the other report, the freshman year initiative evaluation. Sandy?
While they're switching over, I could tell you what ECFE is, if you'd like to know. ECFE, that Bill Morris mentioned. Early Childhood Family Education, and it's a program offered in Minnesota for preschool children and their families. It's not a special education program. It's generally offered, and it certainly, for the communities across the river, it is an effective link to those young families. I could see the puzzlement in your eyes.
Sandy, are you ready?
Good evening. With me this evening is Principal Ed Lucas and Middle School Counselor Deb Weiser to present an update on the freshman year initiative. Just to recall and make sure that everyone's on the same page, the grade nine transition class was approved by the school board in January 2005 as a .25 requirement, and that there were some adjustments made. They moved a ninth grade health requirement to eighth grade, so the overall high school, ninth through 12 requirements, did remain the same. When the proposal came to add FYI as a requirement, these are the goals that were presented. Everything from improving academic achievement down to investigating the world of work. And I know Ed and I are here tonight to kind of stress a little bit that we need to maybe flip and really change the focus as far as the course and what it can accomplish. In many districts throughout the country that are adding a transition course, their key need really is to improve academic achievement, attendance, or graduation rate. When you look at the Hudson School District, we already have about a 98% graduation rate and a 95% attendance rate. So when you're looking at stats already that high, we really don't have a need, a high need, in order to improve those even further. Statistically, most of us know it'd be quite an event to make those even go higher. So what we're saying is, when FYI was brought into the Hudson School District, it was really for those bottom four. To help freshmen understand and respect self and others, to develop a sense of community in the high school, understand the process of academic and career planning, and to have freshmen investigate the world of work in relation to knowledge and of self. And so when we look at this course, and what we've been trying to do for the last year and a half with three semesters under our belt, is we really are focusing on those four goals, and want to keep kind of massaging the course to really make it fit and benefit our students as much as we can. We will continue to monitor the others, but just recognize to increase a 98% graduation rate, much higher than that, will be quite an undertaking. Deb, I'm going to pass it to you. The course, when you look at the next two slides, the academic, personal, social, and career, really line up with the American School Counsel Association standards. And so Deb's going to tell us a little bit about that connection.
One of the things that you may not be aware of is that, in the counseling field, we have standards, just like in every other field in education, for math, English, science. So we have counseling standards that we go by in order to help students really achieve their most, their highest in academics. Oftentimes, we look at counseling as crisis management, the referral part of it, and we lose sight, as adults, as parents, as people who have only known their own counselors 20 or 30 years ago, as people that we may never really met, or were only there for crisis-type things. So here in Hudson, right now, we are beginning a new view of how to pursue the counseling field and how to really reach all students. FYI is just one small piece of that larger puzzle, of how counseling can make a huge difference and impact in academic achievement, raising test scores, helping all students feel like they are a part of the system, and for their personal growth. So the standards that we have, that we're looking at, as far as the academic standards, will complete, or students will complete school with academic preparation essential to choose from a wide range of substantial post-secondary options, including college. What FYI does is offers more time for each student to meet with a counselor, the teacher of that course, to help in their four-year planning, their course selection, their preparation for how to best achieve in Hudson High School, and then on to their further academic choices for college. So it really not only improves the relationship with the counselors, but it improves overall learning for each and every student. They see that sense of purposeful learning in education. The second part is the personal social aspect, and the idea of acquiring knowledge, attitudes, and interpersonal skills. Nowhere in elementary school, the counselor has individual guidance. In the middle school, the counselors go into the classroom and have group guidance. At the high school level, at that most vulnerable transition time, students are much more likely to think independently, but lose that connection with the counseling piece. So in order to help the personal social aspect, the FYI course fits that need of building a firm foundation for all of the other aspects of high school. So it's really a foundational piece for all students. The last piece is the career focus that FYI offers. And again, going back to the idea of the four-year planning piece, the coursework selection, and making that purposeful learning connection between what students are doing academically, whether they're taking, you know, why are they taking freshman history? Why are they taking the math courses that they take? Why is it important to achieve and work toward, whether it's a family consumer course or an AP psych class? What is the purpose that they are doing this? And so that freshman year initiative teacher or counselor can work with each student to see how important it is for them to really work hard, develop their own self-interests, look at their personality, their strengths, and truly develop who they are as people so that they can succeed. Our goal is success for all learners, and that's why FYI is so integral to having the entire freshman class take the course.
Thank you. What we did a little differently from when we were here about a year ago is, Principal Lucas worked with the FYI teacher this year, and they administered at the end of first semester, so about January 2007, an end-of-course survey. And so what you see if you're looking at your board packet, because I kind of have these lined up above each other, similar, so you can see the end-of-course first semester, and then what we decided to do is, about halfway through second semester, we decide to administer it again, and just kind of see is there a difference between an end-of-semester take by students and a mid-course assessment by students. And we thought we found some interesting pieces going on there. They really had a survey that had about 50 questions. We pulled out those, again, that fit those overall goals that we want to stay focused on. So these are the questions that we pulled out that get at respecting self and others. Does FYI clearly define the Hudson High School expectations for its students? Did FYI help you to better understand your needs and wants and how to act on those decisions? And then just blatantly asking them, does FYI help you respect yourself and others? And you can see then, we had anywhere from 80% to slightly over 70% for all those questions, as far as all some of the time versus rarely, not at all. Now, if we compare that to just about halfway through the course, kind of the same shape, but just not quite there, not up to 80%, and you can see the question at the third column there, does FYI help you respect yourself and others? It's actually just a little bit under the other way. I might point out, too, at the first semester, end of first semester, with probably about 165 students taking this, and more like 125 this second semester. Then we went after the goal of the sense of community, and again, asked them at the end of the course, do you feel this class helped you to have a more positive view of school? And then again, did FYI help you to have a sense of community at the high school? And again, you can see over 60, 65% answering both of those questions positively. We compared that then to the mid-year course, not there yet. So some changes happened from the middle of a course to the end, and obviously now, when we get to June, we'll have another little data point to show you, but we're hoping, again, we see the same thing, as far as by the end of the course, the students have a much more positive feeling towards what was accomplished in FYI. And of course, we're looking at academic and career planning. This, again, is our highest piece, and what I'm kind of finding when I look at this data is, the students really are yearning for more information about what to do during school in their academic planning, as well as that post-secondary planning. So when we asked them, was the information about study skills useful? Did FYI help you, or will it help you to improve your high school academic performance? And then, did FYI help you to understand the process of academic and career planning? You can see we're almost pushing 90% saying all or some of the time. Compare that to the mid-course this semester, same kind of look, but not as strong as by the end. So again, we'll be looking for that in June, and what happens second semester. And of course, do you feel the class helped you to evaluate what you are looking for in education at Hudson High School? And then was the time spent with Wisconsin careers useful to you? And we're trying to get at the goal about investigating the world of work. And you can see, again, evaluating their education, nearly 90%, and nearly 80% with Wisconsin careers. And that is a program where the kids are put on computers. There's a whole piece there looking at interest inventories and different careers and strengths, and where are the trends, and what kind of careers can you find in a science field and an arts field? And then the mid-course, this is actually now, again, kind of the same kind of look, and it'll be interesting, once again, to see what it looks like at the end of the semester. And then finally, we just had some questions that asked about the FYI course, and I'm just proud of them just putting this right out there. Did you find FYI to be a useful class? And you can see that we have about 85% saying yes. And then, do you feel the FYI teacher was there to assist you and support you through the FYI class? And that was a resounding yes, with nearly 95% of the students saying all or some of the time. And we do have to congratulate Luke Chaffey, who's been the instructor this year, and he's just done an outstanding job in pulling this course together. He has a passion for the course and has made quite a difference. Now, I want you to compare that with just halfway through the class now this semester. And you can see it's almost the opposite as far as FYI useful. So it'll be really interesting to see, because here's where it was at the end of first semester, where that ends up when we come back in June and ask them those same questions. All right. We wanted also to give you some information on some of the pieces that were also mentioned as far as attendance and some other pieces, and so Mr. Lucas will be addressing those.
As was mentioned earlier, the attendance piece, because of our student body, we have excellent attendance in the school district, so we found no evidence to, that the FYI made any difference with the attendance rates. They were pretty consistent with past data. The discipline incidence, though, brings up an interesting point. And again, we have very low incidence of behavioral issues in our district, and these are average incidents by students, which you can see that, when we look at grade nine, we look at past grades as well, they are less than one incident per student. So that is extremely low, that's excellent for our district. Every class is unique that comes into the high school, and they have different behavioral issues, and you'll notice that the freshman class coming in, which is the teal color, 2009, grade nine, is, when they came in, they were significantly, not significantly higher, but a little bit higher than the previous classes that entered. Now, when we look at them and compare them by the end of the first semester, and compare them with grade 10 in the past history of incidents, this freshman class stayed the same or went down just a little bit with their discipline incidence, whereas the other classes that did not have the FYI class increased slightly as well, went in the other direction. So again, we have to look at each individual classes, the makeup of those classes are different. So this is early in the data collection time, so we don't know how that's going to change. Typically, what happens, though, once students get to be sophomores and they get their driver's license, then those licenses open the doors to different options for them, which may have an impact on their discipline. As we look at the next graph, this is a very, very interesting graph, because when we look at the grade point averages, and this is the cumulative grade point average after the first semester, and the summer, the students who took the summer FYI significantly outperform the other two groups. However, the students who took FYI first semester were ahead of the students that took FYI second semester. Now, of course, the students, we could say that the students who took summer FYI, they are more motivated in the summer to take it. They may be your higher achieving students. However, when you look at the comparison between first and second semester, these students are selected randomly to take the course. They don't have a choice whether they'll take it first or second semester. The computer does that selection for us in the scheduling process. But the first semester students did better than the second semester students.
And I just want to add on, I went into the Excel spreadsheet today, and the blue column there for semester one is an 8.86 grade point average, and the yellow grid for semester two is 8.31, so almost a half. Next, we wanted to point out some other data that we wanted to share that also highlights some of the things that our students are saying to us. Maria Jorgue, our School to Career Coordinator, conducts a School to Career postgraduate survey, and I placed in there so you just have an idea of how many were sent out, how many were returned, but overall, the percentage is pretty decent as far as being able to give us a telling picture of what our graduates are saying. What we did find out this evening, though, is the black and white copy in your board packet is correct for these next two slides, and the user must not hit save Friday afternoon because the colored copies are flipped around. So when you look at this one, you have to imagine it says one-year follow-up, because we can't have five-year for 2003, 2004, and 2005. So for a one-year follow-up, and this question asks, as you look back, what would have been additionally useful to you? And the students are given six choices, or our graduates are given six choices, and I just want to point out on both of these slides, so for all six years, these are in the top three every single year. Increased guidance counselor contact and additional career planning courses. And so this is actually the one-year follow-up, followed by the five-year follow-up. And it is a little interesting, that additional career planning courses, that our students were actually, have been out for five years, or the ones saying, hey, I wish I had had more of that. So again, it's just another data point to say, here's what our kids who have left our school are saying, we wish we had had more in that guidance counselor contact and our career planning courses. A book that many of us, DCC, HSD 2025, many groups are reading, 16 Trends at the moment. And we want to also close here, just making that connection between FYI and what's happening there, and our trends. Trend six talks about, again, that we need to personalize education, and as Deb pointed out, there's something that happens between elementary, middle school guidance and high school guidance, where students don't have that kind of classroom visit by a guidance counselor. And so FYI kind of takes that piece and allows our freshmen to really connect with the high school, and also make sure that they get at that academic and career planning. And we wanted to point out that in trend six, it focuses in on developing the individual talents and abilities of all students. And I think when you hear the administration come back next fall with some recommendations of guidance and FYI, we're really going to focus in on that all. Guidance at the high school tends to really get at and support the students at the two ends of our spectrum. And when we look at the needs of our high school graduates in post-secondary work, we really need to make sure that we're focusing in on all and catch that middle group as well. Trend 15, pressure will grow for society to prepare people for jobs and careers that may not currently exist. And I know in HSD 2025, that one kind of keeps blowing us away. How are we going to come up with goals for this district when we're preparing students for jobs that don't even exist at this moment? So we really, again, need to make sure that we create flexible students, and that we also need us to look at how we can teach them career and entrepreneurial skills. And then trend 16 also gets at the fact that there's going to be a lot more competition, especially in the area of education and administration, but it does focus on ensuring a qualified workforce. And one of the statements that was made in the booklet is, the community expectations, and I do believe this about Hudson, they want our school district to produce very creative, well-educated people. That's an expectation of our citizens. And a little, thank you. So Ed and I, Deb, any of us are open to questions or comments that you might have? Again, I know in the board packet, it does tell you that we are going to be looking at the ASCA standards and some of the initiatives there, along with FYI, and come back in the fall with a recommendation.
Thank you, Sandy. Board members have questions? Sandy, you're...
I do, Mr. President, I can. Thank you. First, a really great presentation. I really enjoyed the way the data was outlaid here on the bar graph, easy for me to look at, and especially enjoyed the comparisons between the midsemester and concluding semester. One criticism, I guess I just have, and that is just on the choice of some of the responses. When I look at this on the bar graph and I see all or some of the time, I guess I don't think that's definitive enough. When I look at, you know, on the red graph, rarely, not at all, I can understand that, and I think those correspond to each other, rarely, meaning just a little bit more than never. But I don't think some of the time is a very good choice for response, and I think maybe get a little bit better picture. I guess, just looking at it right now, most of the time, to me, would be a better corresponding response with all, meaning that this, you know, meets my expectations, all or most of the time. Some of the time could be, you know, 5% of the time, once. So I think that that, you know, could be presented a little bit better. But otherwise, you know, very good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I can, just to follow, do we have the data to break those out? That was the exact same question I had.
Yeah, we do have it broken down by all four, if we want.
Okay, because that would be helpful to me to know, as Mark was saying. Another question I have is, beyond FYI, what kind of contact do our counselors have with students throughout high school? You know, is there ongoing, what's, you know, when you look at the final piece from...
The postgraduate.
Correct. So what do we have ongoing?
Beyond FYI, we rely on our individual class counselors to work with our students to help guide them along. So this is just the first stepping stone, and then, I guess we could say, we pass them off to the counselor to work with them for...
Is that student-initiated, or to, is there any structure ongoing?
That is student-initiated. The counselors do try to work with and meet with their students on an individual basis, but as Deb said, you know, we're looking at changing that counseling model to be a more friendly model rather than crisis intervention. Currently, each of our counselors, we have one counselor per grade level, and with our freshman class, with our senior class right now, we have about 417 students. Our freshman class and sophomore classes are about 440. So the numbers are increasing significantly. We haven't changed our counseling numbers in over the years. And it is very difficult with a school this size for the counselors to do more than crisis management. But we do spend a significant amount of time with our juniors and seniors, the individual counselors, working with them for that school placement, planning, or applying to colleges and universities or vocational schools, and working, the senior counselor works more closely with them to make sure they have their applications in and the paperwork completed, transcripts sent out.
Okay, thanks.
Just a couple of additions to Ed's comments. One is that the counselors get to know their students and the parents of the students better by having the same students for four years. The ninth grade counselor becomes the 10th grade, and they move with the students. The other, and you'll hear more about this as we move forward with the ASCA model that Deb talked about, but they are looking at a different way of organizing their time and being more proactive with all students. And one of those factors is what's termed a conferencing model, where they actively set up conferences with students and the parents of those students, and especially focused at certain points in their high school career. But we'll be bringing more of that material to you later, so.
The FYI course has been beneficial in helping our freshman students get a jump start on taking a look at the career choices that they have out there. This has been a tremendous help to the counselors in general. The earlier, and the research shows, the earlier that you can start looking at those career models, the more successful your students are going to be. You know, we begin, they do some career exploration at the middle level. We need to start that probably at the sixth grade level or even in the elementaries to get them a better start in taking a look at all of the options that are out there, because we know those options are going to change, as we saw in the 16 Trends, that the changes are going to be incredible. Our students that are in the elementary schools are going to be seeing jobs that we just, that are non-existent today. So the FYI program has been extremely beneficial in providing some assistance to those counselors, to opening those doors, doing a number of career interest inventories, so students can figure out what it is that they really want to do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Ed. Thanks, Sandy. We'll move on to consent items. Topics for action, including expenditures in the amount of $1,666,173.89. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent items.
I saw more.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is approved. Next item is CISA 11 Annual Convention Appointment. I think that's in our board packets, and I think this is an annual... I think that's in our board packets, and I think this is an annual appointment. Mary, do you wish to speak to this item?
Well, we're looking for a delegate that the board assigns to attend the convention, the CISA 11 Convention on June 4th at 7:00 PM in Turtle Lake at the CISA 11 offices.
Do we have a...
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Minister?
I would submit the name of Tracy Alene Havish-Aleene as the delegate to the CISA 11 Convention.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is Tracy, are you up for the challenge?
Yeah, that's fine. I went last year.
Good, good.
So now I know how to get to Turtle Lake.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thanks, Tracy, for serving in that capacity. Next item is the City of Hudson Annexation Agreement. And again, I want to thank the city for their support of the annexation, and this is the outcome of that meeting. Tim?
You can see on page 40 of your book, the annexation agreement, and it's pretty close to what we had been discussing in the past month or so. And I may be just point out a couple of highlights of the agreement. When we started the process, we were looking at core facility charges in the neighborhood of 309,000. By the time we were done working with the city on this agreement, we're in about the neighborhood of 165,000. So core facility charges have been reduced greatly over what they had started out to be. The one item that we certainly would like to have negotiated out, but in the end, we were not able to come to exact agreement on was the extension of city utilities, or extension of water and sewer out to the boundary of our property line. And that's on page three of the agreement, page 42 of your book, and it's item G at the top of the page. So in the event that the city were to continue, were to have another annexation, which we are told is probably unlikely, that would be something that we would be held responsible for, is extending those utilities out to the property line. But in the end, even doing that, the savings over having our own utility systems on site, having our own well, our own septic system greatly, greatly reduced by agreeing to the agreement that we have here. And so, and I, and I too would also like to thank Denny Darnold, Mayor Bro, City Council, Hoffman Engineers, and Stevens Engineering, or Hoffman Architects and Stevens Engineers for all of your help in the process.
Okay, thank you, Tim. We have the agreement before us. Do we have a motion for approval of the agreement?
Before you do that?
Cindy?
Tim, I don't understand what you just said.
Okay.
Cindy, was there a particular?
Now, what you're saying is that with the annexation, we will, the new school will be on city water and sewer.
Yes.
However, those utilities will not extend to the very far end of the property, only to our hookups.
Right. The, the city had agreed, rather than really forcing us to extend those utilities out, they agreed that we could bring them just to where we need them. And then in the future, if, if there were an annexation and we needed to do that, then we'd have to extend them out to the property line. So there, it's really...
And who would do, who, who, who would pay for that?
That would be the school district.
So if down the road 10 years, a big housing development is annexed adjacent to the school's property, the school district will pay to bring the city water and sewer lines from the school's facility to the edge of the property where it'll be picked up by the housing development, for example?
That's correct. Right, we'd, we'd pay for that extension out to our property line.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
My sense in that process, we, we would be in there trying to do some negotiating. Whether or not we'd be successful is another question, but my sense is we would be trying to work out some kind of an agreement with the developer project.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Dan, just a quick comment. Cindy, the, and I guess for the entire board, I would just point out that the conference of plan for the City of Hudson does not, at the current time, show the city extending to the south past our property further into Troy. There's not an agreement, official agreement between Troy and City of Hudson, but certainly an agreement, and that agreement certainly is reflected in the conference of plan for the City of Hudson.
Well, and I guess I see it as to our advantage, not to be paying for utilities to go someplace where they're not going to be used, you know, right now. So it seems to me this is a good thing.
Okay, any other comments, questions? If not, entertain a motion for approval to go forward with this annexation agreement with the City of Hudson.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kaiser.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. We'll move on to the new elementary school schematic design. Dick, do you want to lead us on that?
I will, thank you, Dan. I'll be real brief and to the point. We have representatives from Hoffman Architects with us tonight. The building committee, working with River Crest Elementary School, is, they did meet this afternoon, and now I understand why Pat Hodges was a little in favor of some of the colors that we were looking at, like the blue metal roof. Now I understand. Now I understand. Essentially, what the building committee is looking for is a schematic design approval. I would point out that we continue to be on schedule. We continue to be either at or under budget based on schematic design in front of you tonight. And I would ask the board members to take out their calendars. I'm going to give you a date for groundbreaking for the, the new elementary school, which is, we just tried to, or did determine that this afternoon. And that's going to be Wednesday, June 13th at 7:00 PM. Again, Wednesday, June 13th, 7:00 PM. And we will get details to the, to the full board as far as the particulars. So with that, Tom Cox, principal and architect from Hoffman, will give you the floor, Tom.
Welcome. Thank you, Dick. Again, my name is Tom Cox. With me is Jody Andres, Catherine Kruichshank, and in the audience, Mark Volkey, the team from Hoffman that's been working very diligently with the facilities committee on this project. I think Mary handed out to the board a binder that has the schematic design approval in it, which is a compilation of all the information that was produced up to a certain point that we call schematic design. And we're presenting that to the board. We presented it to the committee in order for them to have a record of that drawing, of that information up to that point, and presenting it to the board for final approval. We've actually gone beyond this point just a little bit, and we'll share some of that information with you tonight, some of the information that we actually shared with the committee, some updated drawings, a little updated site plan, updated floor plan, and updated elevations. But all, everything that you see, that you have before you in the binder, you have actually seen before, so there's really nothing new with one exception. There is a tab, and I'm going to see which tab is it? Three, there's information on the sustainable design, and we've talked a lot about this building being designed very sustainably and using energy very efficiently. And so there's some description, some descriptive information there about some of the building systems outlining the HVAC, which is the mechanical systems, how we're going to be treating lighting, resources, water, the site, and, and you can read that. That's new information for you, but it begins to go into a little more detail about how we intend to incorporate some of these ideas into the design. The one thing that's up on the screen right now that I wanted to point out, again, that's a little piece of new information, we've actually included a LEED rating checklist in your binder. And, and as I said, this is kind of new information. While at this time, the, the committee and the board has not committed to actually formally certifying this project under the LEED rating system, and I think I'll stop right there. Does everyone understand what LEED is? You've heard of that, you know kind of what it is, and it's the checklist and outlines some performance criteria for buildings.
Tom, why don't you give the description for LEED and then also what NC, what that means?
Sure. LEED is Leadership and Energy Efficiency Design, and NC means new construction. LEED, under the auspices of the U.S. Green Building Council, is a formal rating system that looks at buildings from a very comprehensive set of criteria. For example, you'll see as it starts out in the checklist, there's sustainable sites, and there's a list of information in, in terms of site selection, brownfield redevelopment, stormwater design, heat island effect. All of these ideas are pertinent in one way or another to the buildings that we design, particularly for new construction, which is again what the NC stands for. There are also LEED rating systems for existing buildings. There's LEED rating systems for commercial interiors, and they've also begun to develop some LEED rating systems for residential construction, but those are in pilot programs right now. Some of these criteria, you'll see that at the top of the page, there's kind of a yes, a question mark, and a no. And we've done, we've gone through this entire rating sheet and done an initial pass at what we believe we would be able to achieve with the design of this building. And so you can see on the, on the left-hand column, under the Y, under the S's, where we have ones, that means we get one point for being able to achieve that particular credit. For example, under one, two, three, four down, brownfield redevelopment, there's a red one in the no column. Obviously, we're not redeveloping a brownfield site or a contaminated site, so we wouldn't qualify for that point. So you can scroll down, and Jody, why don't you scroll down a little bit? Water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, you can see, for example, under credit 3.1, wastewater use reduction 20% or 3.2, water use reduction 30%. By using low-flow toilets, for example, or managing water use within the building, we believe we'd be able to achieve these kinds of water reduction rates, perhaps even looking at something like waterless urinals, for example. We'd be able to achieve these water reduction rates. All of the ideas, however they would be applied, would be approved by the facilities committee before we'd implement any of them. But what we've done is just taken a quick pass on what we, we believe we would be able to achieve pretty easily. The column in the middle, the question mark column, are those items that are in a question. We'd have to, we'd have to have some discussion about what it might mean to the project or particular system that we might implement before we'd be able to achieve that credit. So if you scroll all the way down, Jody, please, kind of to the very end, you'll see that the totals add up 36 yes, 14 question marks, and 19 no. And if you look at the very bottom, you can see that between the silver column, 33 and 38 points, we feel like we'd be able to achieve a LEED quality silver building, probably without trying very hard and without adding any additional cost to the project in order to achieve that level of sustainable design. We may be able to get up into the gold, if we can, the gold level, if we can pick up a few of those points that are in the, the 14 column, and we'll discuss that as the design progresses.
Tom, I just want to clarify one statement. You, you made the statement that the facilities committee would approve these, and I think you're talking about our design-construction committee, not the facilities committee of the board.
Yes, I'm sorry. I am, I'm talking about your design-construction committee. Yep. So this is new information. Again, there has not been any direction to formally certify this project. There would be some additional cost if we decided to formally certify the project. Could be as much as $100,000, maybe just a little bit more if we decided to formally certify the project. We could probably show you how you could save that much money in the design of the building, if you're very interested in doing that. But it is a trigger point that is getting very close to being pulled, and so we'll have, we'll talk a little bit more about that in our design committee as we move forward kind of the next time. But I wanted to show you, because sustainable design has been such a huge part of the dialogue and the discussion over this building, where we're at, how we're managing this through the design process, and that we're using the LEED and the LEED criteria as benchmark performance criteria for our design. So are there any questions about that? Any sense to everybody? And there'll be more updates as we, as we proceed with the design. So that's the, that's the new information in the schematic design submittal. Is there any other additional questions about the schematic design submittal at this Okay. Then what I think we're going to do is share with you tonight a little more of the progress information that has happened since you've received this binder. And I think I'm going to let Jody kind of take over from here and talk a little bit about the, the site and the building floor plan, and then Catherine's going to talk a little bit about what the building is beginning to look like from an elevation standpoint. Jody?
What you have up on the screen right now is the current status of the, the floor plan put onto the site. As you know, the site bid package, the first bid package is going out, and that is essentially going to be everything outside of this loop road. So if you go all the way around the building right here, all the way around, everything outside of that is what's being bid in this next bid package, or I should say, the first bid package. Everything inside of that, as you see from what's up there, hasn't really been designed yet. What you don't see are the sidewalks, the playgrounds, those kind of things. But what we do indicate on here are different options that you have, for instance, right here for expansion of classrooms or other space as it needs to happen on the building. And we do that to make sure that you have the ability to expand this facility if needed, not to say that you will, but if needed in the future, without harming any of the existing site features or getting in the way of something that you're, you're putting on, on the site right now. So this, this is how the building would sit on the site, more or less. There's going to be a little bit of tweaking that goes on, obviously, as, as we move further, developing the sidewalks and the other aspects of the site. Some of these things that are, are going in place right now might move a little bit, you know, five or 10 feet as it needs to be, needs to accommodate some of the, the site features. But more or less, this, this is how the site plan is going to lay out around the building. You have staff and visitor parking on the south side of the, the building here, along with on the north side. Your receiving will be up towards kind of the middle north side of the building. Highway F is to your left, I should say. Visitor and, and staff parking will be out in front, and then bus drop-off will be out and back here. And then the road continues, obviously, out to Cooley Trail. Any questions on that? Okay, next. Again, the current status of the floor plan, as, as we presented it today, basically, it's not much different in terms of classroom locations from what you've seen in your schematic design submittal. What we have done here is started to clarify some of these elements as they relate to the elevation. You see, these are a little bit different shape than what you might have seen before. And that's really driven by how the building is start, is starting to develop in the, in the third dimension, you know, the elevations or the height of the building. You still have the same kind of functions that we've always talked about in here, it's just arranged a little bit differently on the outside. So we have the classroom wings, and again, we're showing future classroom expansions. The art room has actually been relocated from what you have in your, your schematic design. It's now actually towards the top center of the page, or center of the plan. We've relocated some of the large group toilet rooms to the north side of the gymnasium, and then reconfigured this little piece that's right south of the, the gymnasium here to be some different offices. And the reason we did that was actually to try and open up some more of the interior space, interior corridor space to the outside a little bit more than, than maybe what we had in some of the past plans. Early childhood and kindergarten are still down in this kind of L shape down here to the southwest or lower left here. Administration would be right here as you come into the building, your main entrance off of the highway F side. You're coming in right past the media center and computer lab, as you see it there, up into the cafeteria, and then, again, following the main circulation out to the back here, right kind of at the center, out to the, to the east. Maintenance, kitchen, and receiving. Maintenance, kitchen and receiving all happen up around kind of that central location up in the corner. You can see at the very top of the page, it's indicating the loading dock for semi-delivery. The, the building is actually going to shield that a little bit from your westerly or northwest westerly winter winds, so that should help operations of that in the winter, as well as some of the other maintenance functions are going to be hidden from the highway F side now. Any questions on that?
Jody?
Yeah.
Question regarding the future expansion.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, the way you have it outlined there, is that a logical flow for adding another section to the school?
If you need to add a whole another section, that's your most logical place, yes.
Okay.
In other words, if you need to add four, a block of four classrooms at this, at one time, yeah.
Okay.
The other ones are really, if you need to add maybe another additional program that's not accommodated right here right now, like a single classroom, there's other spaces that are going to be more appropriate for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to comment again about this, this design being developed as a school community center. And this next phase of the design even supports that further than the phase before this one or the, it's, it's continuing to evolve in that direction. And so I appreciate the work of our architects to help us achieve that.
And what Mary is referring to is just the, the level of development that you don't quite see on here yet, the things that are going to really start to bring the architecture of the building out. You know, this is, this is a good start, it's a good floor plan, but as Catherine's going to go through in a little bit, you know, we start to pull these things up into the third dimension and it starts to, to make it come alive, basically.
Elevations, this is a very interesting site. You've got 40 acres. It's rural, there are undulating hills, there are lovely trees and so on. And so we were trying to come up with something that's fairly organic. And one key element in this is how we've treated these breakout spaces. We have these arced roofs, I'm not saying arched because they're not symmetrical. And that implies some movement. And as you look around the building, you'll see we've got a series of these, and they all point in the same direction as if the wind were blowing, I guess since it's rivercrest, waves. But if it hadn't been rivercrest, it could be wheat or corn or grasses or what have you. So there's a sense of movement that is part of what you would, you know, expect in a large, open site. And so that element is repeated all around the building. And you can see it in the mass of the gym roof. And then also, this is our main entrance, and we've got three columns at the end of this canopy, which would also have that curved top. So it's a theme then that, as you look at the 3D model, you'll see recurs all around. A couple of other features we have, most of our windows face south or north, and some face west. And so we're concerned about shading them. And so you can see that we have exterior sun shading devices to help keep the sun out of the rooms when it's at its peak. And you also see those reflected on the model, so they actually help give it some character and definition. And what you're seeing right here is, this is the computer lab, and this is the media center. And those windows are, those three bumpouts there, those are highlighted by that. And then this is the cafeteria. These are tall windows into the cafeteria. And there's also a porch there because we have direct exit out of the cafeteria, but it's also an access for the after-school programs, well, before and after school. Should we move on to the next? You see then, this theme is carried around the whole building. This is a south elevation, so this is the long classroom wing. Then you see these breakout areas. And again, like I said, you've got these waves all rolling in the same direction. And it's pretty clear when you look at the 3D massing model what's going on. And at the far end, again, you can see the entrance. So as you were to drive up and approach the school, the entrance is quite prominent with the way the canopy comes out with those three tall pillars. And then the east elevation, this is the rear, this is how you would, if you came down off Cooley Trail, this is the view you would see. And so you can see all the waves, if you like, going away from you. These are the ends of each of the classroom wings, which may be used by the bus kids for the entrance to the classrooms and also for going out to recess. But in addition to these being the ends of the classroom wings, we have a rear entrance which would lead directly to the gym. So for after-hours use, if people park in what's normally reserved for bus parking, this is how they would get into the school. And so I think that just gives you a general flavor of what we have in mind. This is our first blush, there's some tweaking to do and a bit more development and selecting colors and materials and so on, but that's the start. Do you have any questions?
Does it look like we're headed down the right path? We feel like we've got a very exciting building and something that is really going to speak both to the sustainable nature of the site and to the community use of the building, but most importantly, serve as an educational facility for the kids, because that's the reason why you did this in the first place. And we're proud to be able to help you, help you out with this, so.
Tom, just a quick question on the, on the design and the waves. And I certainly am in favor of a, you know, building, an attractive building, but do any of those pieces inflate our costs at all?
No, most of that stuff is free. No. Absolutely, there's, there's a cost impact. And the next level of development is to go through and do a more detailed cost analysis of those kinds of, of ideas that are on this building, so we can understand them from a cost-impact point of view. And we'll be bringing that information back to the design committee, actually, at our next meeting. We have talked about that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Another point in that binder that we had did speak to the budget and being within the budget, the referendum budget, and the additional funds that we have set aside in the fund balance.
Absolutely. Right now, we feel the project is in budget with everything that we're showing you, but we do need to do one more detailed level of structural investigation into the building as we look to understand how it's built and some of the ideas that you mentioned. So again, there may be some tweaking after we do that analysis, and that's the next level of planning. Great question.
Any, anyone else? Is there more to your presentation?
That's, that's it for this evening, unless you have any other questions.
Thanks, Tom.
I, just, just a real quick comment. I just, I, I love the aesthetics, I love the functionality. I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing so far.
Thank you very much.
Tom, could I, just, could you put the one screen up on the picture with the west elevation? I just want to point out to the, the board, some of the opportunities that we're going to have. And Catherine, maybe you can talk about the, there's going to be some dramatic views on the inside of the building, mainly along the media center, and also possibly some skylights or clear stories above the gym. Can you point those out, Catherine? Just to give you a little bit of a flavor for what this building potentially is going to look like.
Yeah. As buildings get very deep, they could get very dark. And we do like to explore opportunities to bring in light from above, not through skylights, but through vertical windows that are high up, which we call clear stories. And so, starting with the canopy, the canopy is not that low. It looks low in relation to buildings, about 12 feet off the ground. But by being lower, not only does it provide more of a shelter for the kids waiting to be picked up, but you can see that there's a piece above it, which is here, which we can put some glass in so that that throws light into the waiting area. And then, as you'll see, the gym with the asymmetrical arc, we have a higher wall on the north side, which is great because we can put glass there. And that will light up the gym, but will not bring direct sunlight in. So if you're playing volleyball or something, you don't sort of lose the ball in this great glare. So there are opportunities to light the gym, even though it's embedded right in the center of the building. And then we do have some other opportunities on the side of this entrance canopy, where we can put some more high-level glass. And if we can just flip to the floor plan pretty quickly. One of the features of the media center, which is that curved wall there, is it doesn't read in this plan, but we're seeing that as being glass. And so if we bring high-level windows in just above that lobby area, the light will go into the center, the media center also. So it's quite dramatic when you can bring light in from above, and of course, it's functional. And so you shouldn't have many dark corridors or interior spaces in this building.
I have a question. Why windows on the north and not on the east?
The north is great because the sun doesn't come in that way. And for a gym, that's helpful because sunlight in a gym can be distracting, because, you know, you may be looking up at balls and so on, and they just sort of disappear in the glare. East and west are tough because the sun does come in and brings in a lot of heat. And so we really want to shade those. South is great, but we still need to shade those as well. And if that answers the question fully enough, or?
Thank you. We do have to approve this, this, this stage of the design phase, so I'll entertain a
Mr. President, I would make a motion approving this, what do we call it, the preliminary schematic design?
Schematic.
That's the motion I'll make.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion is approved. Thank you, Tom. We look forward to working with your team.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to new elementary school funding resolution authorizing 9.5 million in general obligation bonds. Tim?
As, I guess I'll give a brief overview for everyone, so they have a summary understanding of our funding process for the new elementary. Back in December, we had issued what were called bond anticipation notes. They're of a short-term nature. The amount was $9,500,000. That was our first step in the, in the process for the funding of the new elementary. The second step is now replacing or refinancing that $9,500,000 short-term issue with a long-term issue, which would be 20 years, and again, for the same amount. And then I'll go a step out from that. Our third, third and final step will be another month out from now, when we'll issue the, the final $2,540,000 of notes. So that will bring our total to $12,40,000, which was what we had for the bond referendum. And we have Brian Brewer here tonight from Baird, and he will tell us a little bit about the results. Also, I'll just mention, that's on page 47, is just a brief summary that I had. And then the sample resolution is on the following pages. And I'll let Brian take it from there.
Thanks for joining us, Brian. Go ahead.
Thank you for having me back. As Tim just summarized, this is phase two of a three-phase financing plan that began in December, shortly after the referendum was approved. We issued 9.5 million on a temporary basis to, to start investing those funds and putting them in the construction fund for bills that have been coming through this winter and spring. I met with finance last week, kind of summarized how phase two was looking relative to what you had projected at the referendum. Just to refresh your memory, at referendum, we were utilizing a 5% estimate on the 20-year financing cost. And it was an average tax impact of 26 cents, okay? As of this second phase, which is the majority of, of the financing, 9.5 out of 12 million, the rates that were reserved yesterday for your pending your approval tonight would lock that long-term portion in at a 4.31% average, which plugging a conservative amount or an interest estimate for that remaining 2 million would lower the projected or referendum estimate of principal, or of interest cost by $1.7 million relative to those, again, we were conservative going in, but, you know, the market has cooperated along this financing time period. And so I'm excited to announce that the long-term portion is locked in at a 4.31 pending your approval. One item that, that certainly played no small part in that is that the district, Tim and, Tim and I had had a conversation with the Moody's Rating Agency, which is a national credit evaluator, that investors look to, to help rank and quantify risk among their different investments. And the district received an affirmation of its AA2 rating, which, that rating, to put it in context, is two off of the highest you could achieve as a school district, and puts you in the top 20 school districts in terms of credit worthiness in the state of Wisconsin. They were, their, their only real discussion was, should, are you at a stage where they could bump you up into that next notch higher, so the second from the highest, which would put you in a company of only five districts statewide? And to report back to you, they, and you could weigh in too, Tim, but they, they were saying that you are doing everything that is within your power, you know, in terms of managing on a conservative basis, you know, utilizing and having a fund balance policy and maintaining that fund balance policy. You know, you know, being under the revenue limit certainly weighs in nicely compared to other Wisconsin school districts. The only limiting factor at this stage was just the, the aggregate tax base within the district at $3.5 billion relative to the, that category's peers is still a little bit small. So again, something that's really not in your control, that was kind of keep, you know, keeping them from bumping you up that next notch. But they said your, your trends look great and you're on the right path as far as that. So as Tim mentioned, the, the final step would be 10-year notes that would lock in rates on the, on the final $2,40,000. The plan would either be the June board meeting or July, depending on agendas and schedules. But so far, everything looks good with the market. And again, I'm very happy that we're so far under the, the referendum estimates.
Brian, briefly, by having that credit rating, that achieves us savings, correct, in terms of the interest rate? So as compared to the next lower rating, what would be the number of basis points?
Correct. The gen, the general estimate is about five basis points per category. It varies depending on the market environment. You know, it, that saves you there as well as, still even at the AA2 category, there's a benefit for purchasing AAA-rated insurance, which is the, again, that top, that's the highest category, primarily because the investors of municipal bonds look, it makes their credit work easier for their, their files as they're purchasing these bonds. They're willing to pay a, or receive a lower interest rate from the district in exchange for you having that AAA on there. So your cost of insurance also goes down. So there's various ways that that credit rating saves you relative to other school districts that aren't rated as highly.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brian?
I have a couple, Brian. So you mentioned AA2 rating. Is there anything that would be under our control or, you know, able to position us more positively, i.e. a presentation on our part to Moody's or better communication?
That's effectively, yeah, that's effectively what, what Yeah, that's effectively what Tim and I were doing on the credit call, laying out the different, you know, how much better than the averages you are in the categories that you can control. And, you know, again, in their report that I think, I can get Tim a summary to distribute of the actual rating report, it purely came down to the, you know, just the district tax base size and where you are in the development. You know, the fact that you've grown so rapidly over the last 10, 15 years relative to some of the communities that, to give you a frame of reference, Madison Metropolitan is a AA1, and they, their tax base is, I think, in excess of 40 billion. Elm Brook is roughly 7.7 billion in tax base. Again, you're, they have similar profiles. McQuan is another one. It's about four and a half billion. So you're very close to their tax base.
Is there another district in this, say, this part of the state, northwestern or northern Wisconsin, that is in that AA2 rating? Or would they effectively be more of the urban?
Yeah, not off the top of my head. I believe Eau Claire might be a AA3. I'm not sure if they'd be a AA2.
Yeah, obviously.
Most of them are going to be your metro, Dane County and Metro Milwaukee.
Bigger tax base. Obviously, what I'm thinking is, you know, if you did the presentation and positioning, and maybe my sales is coming through, but, you know, is there a way for us to better position ourselves in front of Moody's? And then if the rate were to improve, then could we, should we, might we be looking at some refinancing?
Sure. I mean, again, I maintain not.
I know that that's probably not a fair question to ask you kind of on the fly here.
It wouldn't change your rates enough to generate the, a significant change in the rates that you have, so the cost of reissuing at that point, you know, anytime we've done refinancings over the recent history, it, we've always been, you know, waiting and watching for opportune times where you're saving a significant amount in interest cost reduction relative to what it costs you to get back into the market at that stage. So that is certainly a possibility, and it's certainly something, these bonds, the last 10 years will be refinancable again. You know, again, these rates are very low, so we would need a pretty favorable environment over the next 10 years to utilize it, but you do have that ability. So should you continue improving on that credit scale, that would certainly be something we'd be monitoring for, you know, future interest cost savings.
Thank you.
In our conference call, we talked about things like Brian mentioned, the strong fund balance policy, meeting or exceeding budgets, where the fund balance is relative to our budget, that we're funding our OPEB liability, the annual required contribution, growth in the district, room for additional growth. All of those things are really on our side. So like Brian's saying, I think the main one is our size in the terms of our tax base. We just are, we're quite a step below the others with that next higher rating. They have quite a bit bigger tax base than we do.
I wonder if I could just reiterate that AA2 is a very, very good rating, and so we, and I know we're pushing the envelope there, but, and it's worth pushing. But I don't, know that we don't want to miss what was just said a little earlier, and that is that we just moved from 5.5 and 1/4% cost to 4.31, which saves us 1.7 million?
Well, it's, I think it was 5% that we used at referendum, down to 4.31, which saved, well, which is lower than the estimates by 1,007, 1.7 million in terms of interest cost.
That's pretty significant.
Through money.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Tim, do you have anything else to add? I guess I have a question regarding, in terms of praising the approval of the resolution. I know this is a fairly lengthy document here. Can you give us some guidance in terms of what you need us to?
The resolution is in the form of the title, that top paragraph. So it's, you know, those first four lines of the resolution.
Okay, so if we have a motion.
A motion.
With the approval of that resolution, we're good.
I would move the approval of the resolution as.
Could you read that, Tom? It's the top of page 48.
Thank you. I move the approval of resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of $9,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds, providing the form of the bonds and levying a tax in connection therewith.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is approved. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, and we'll see you next month or shortly.
Thanks, Brian.
The approval of contract with Stevens Engineers for the new elementary school. I believe Tim is going to lead us on that one.
Page 65, thank you. Contract with Stevens Engineers, who are the civil engineers for the new elementary school. The proposal here is for professional engineering services and bidding services for the bypass, turn lanes, and the public utility extension for the elementary school. If you turn to page 66, and down at the bottom, you can see the compensation, topographic survey, lump sum of 3,800 plus reimbursable expenses, a design fee of 51,860 plus reimbursables estimated at 700, and then some hourly fees. And so we're asking for that approval of that contract tonight so that they can move forward with the site development.
Mr. President, I say the question. Tim, has our legal counsel looked over this short-form agreement? I guess one of my concerns was this is, you know, a standard form drafted, you know, by the Society of Professional Engineers, and I would assume then that they had made certain that their interests were protected and well-represented, and I want to make certain that ours are as well, since this is so important. So, you know, has Mick and crew looked this over?
We haven't reviewed this contract, but it has been reviewed by Hoffman in conjunction with their work being done. And we can, we can take it back if you want to approve it pending a legal review. We can send that their way.
I would be certainly far, yes, I'd be far more comfortable having our legal counsel make sure that the district's interests are protected, as I'm sure the engineers are in this document.
Any other comments from board members, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agreement with Stevens Engineers.
I would make the motion for the approval, Mr. President, pending our legal counsel's approval of this document, the short-form agreement here.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is approved. Thank you, Tim. We'll move on to the YMCA partnership agreement. Mary?
We are spending quite a bit of time this evening talking about our new elementary school, Rivercrest Elementary School, and the approving a number of pieces around that to move that forward. And here is another one that is a wonderful opportunity that we have because of the location of the school itself. As you know, the school site is across from the YMCA, Camp St. Croix, and Camp St. Croix is part of the greater YMCA of St. Paul, YMCA of Greater St. Paul. And we have been working with them and talking to them about various opportunities that may become available to us because of the site. And we've put together a statement of partnership that we'd like you to endorse. The partnership itself has very significant benefits that we're looking at, possibilities that bring the best of both organizations together. If you look at the YMCA's vision statement, their core values, supporting strong kids, strong families, strong communities, certainly those are in alignment with the values and the direction of our organization. And this partnership that we're looking at as far as the potential and the possibilities, it's obviously a unique opportunity that we have to collaborate on programs that will not only benefit our students, but also the, hopefully, the broader community. We have the potential to provide higher-quality programs, more varied, and to eliminate some duplications of programs and services that we both might provide through this partnership. Both the Camp St. Croix and the Rivercrest Elementary School, Camp St. Croix already is a community asset, and certainly, Rivercrest being developed not only as a school, but as a school community center, will be a community asset as well. And to combine the forces and the benefits of both organizations and the strengths of both organizations is an opportunity that we have to move forward with. I would ask for your endorsement of this partnership statement and what would happen as far as the next steps in relationship to that. This would start the process of the two organizations getting together and talking about possibilities. Where could we come together? What could we explore and look at in regard to extending services to our community, to our students, and what are those opportunities? So first, identification of them, doing some investigation exploration of that, and then identifying those areas that we think have the highest potential for us to work together. I think it's a very wonderful opportunity, and I really thank the YMCA of Greater St. Paul for their willingness to work with us and to connect both the benefits of each of our organizations together.
Thank you, Mary. Any comments, questions, board members? My only comment would be that I hope that, and I totally agree with this partnership idea, but that it's not just limited to that elementary school and that we can, you know, involve some of the other elementary and other schools within the district to also be part of that valuable partnership that's created and currently exists.
That's certainly a very good point.
Mr. President, I'd just make the comment, in my particular personal situation, that although I obviously approve and would support this, I think it'd be best judgment at this point for me to abstain from any vote, considering any appearance of conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
And then with that, I would move that the school board endorse this statement of partnership between the school district and the YMCA.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is approved with one abstention.
I would just like to thank Tom Brinsco and his organization and staff for their vision of, and their willingness to work with us and to move forward with something that I hope will be benefit of, again, to our students and to our greater community.
Thanks, Mary. We'll move on to the school age care staffing authorization. Jennifer?
Currently, our school age care program is at 388 for the summer, which means we're approaching 400. We're asking that the board authorize the director of personnel to add staff as needed if the program was to exceed 400 children. We would maintain the current child caregiver ratios at 15 to 1 for K through 5 and 11 to 1 for pre-K. And I wanted to note that this program, in terms of staff salaries, is paid for by user fees and not funded by taxpayers.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Any comments, questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of this school.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is approved. Next is a letter of agreement with the WCEA. Hudson for the inclement weather makeup. Jennifer, again.
In coordination with the teachers' union, it has been agreed that the best way to make up the inclement weather time, which was incurred during 2006-7, would be at the beginning of the 2007-8 school year for a staff development day, which would be held on August 27th. And this is, again, in the agreement on page 77. And this would be district-wide.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
A comment. I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the teachers and to also the administration for working together to come up with what I think is really an excellent plan of action for making up those days, and I think it's terrifically in the best interest of our students and our district, and so thanks a lot for making that work.
I have a question that just came up in my mind regarding, I believe there's a state law in terms of starting school prior to Labor Day. Is there any issue?
There, no. No. We've had this looked over. This has been checked by our legal counsel.
Okay, good.
The law is about the start, the first day of school, and that doesn't change as a result of this.
Okay, good. Therefore, I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is approved. Move on to the 07-08 new support staff proposal. Mark?
Yes, well, as directed by the board at our last meeting, the personnel committee did review once again the 2007, 2008 support staff requests, and that's what you'll find in your packet on page 79. And we did do a little bit of refinement on that document, and Jennifer, please jump in if my notes are incorrect, but the district-wide secretary position that was presented at the last meeting has now been changed to a clerical aide position at three-quarter time, as opposed to, I believe, the previous one was a full-time position, and a very small increase in the program support secretary, also district-wide, was a change. And I believe we did result in a savings of, what number do you have, Jennifer?
Before the clerical aide, which was, we had first proposed as a secretary, was at around 31,000. We now have narrowed that down, so it's at about 16. And even with the addition of the program support secretary at 3,300, we're still well under the 31,000 by about 11,000, about $12,000. So we're still, we went down significantly from where we first came in.
Okay, thanks a lot. So unless there are any further questions, that's, as I said, with those two changes, otherwise this is the same document that we saw last month for support staff.
I do have one question. I'm just kind of curious, and I think this is the venue to ask. We just talked about the new elementary school. We've got one more year. Does this reflect staffing on a one-year transition or staffing? I'm just wondering, are any of these positions for the new elementary school, or will be carried over to the new?
We've got the one position, which is at custodial level. That one would possibly be folded into the new elementary when it's completed. And this one is due to the shifting that will happen when we begin construction of the new elementary. Jim Stayschool will be on site for a large part of the time, acting as our representative, and so there'll be a shifting that will occur in what we'll have open as a custodial opening. And then at that point, when the school's finished, they would shift over to the new elementary.
Okay. Because I'm just, you know, I just thought of it during our presentation and on the staffing, that I'm assuming that our staffing levels and busing and everything's going to remain in place, kind of status quo for the balance of this year, leading up to the transition to the new elementary school. year, leading up to the transition to the new elementary school. Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a question regarding, now that the, you know, we've, we've lowered or lessened the, the amount of hours here in a couple of staffing positions, at least in the clerical aide. My question is to the administration in that, are we, do we, are we sufficiently staffed to do the things that we need to do, given this, this change?
I think based on what we're asking for here, this would, this would give us sufficient support. I do.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the oh seven, oh eight support staff request.
So moved.
And seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved.
I just, I'm sorry. Mr. President, just since the vote is over, I do have comment that I would like to make about the support staff requests, both as they were made at the last board meeting and taken off the table at that time, and also as they were just passed before us, and that is that sometimes that, like it did last, at that last meeting, we took it off the table so quickly that I think that, you know, we may have given some people the, the impression that these were less important positions to us, and I just wanted to really say for the record that it's because these positions are so important that we did want to go back and have more discussion about them and really make sure that, that we did justice, both to our employees and to our administrators and, and in terms of the amount of support that they get. But really, in terms of honoring our support staff, I think that, I, I just for one think that the district couldn't run without them, and feel very, very strongly that the positions that you've added here are very, very important, and that, that we really just want to affirm to our support staff that we care very much, that, that, that they feel valued in the district, so.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Good point.
And I was going to say something very similar. Certainly, support staff helps teachers in the classroom do their work, and when we talk about our, all of our staff, whether it's a teacher, a custodian, secretary, clerical aide, someone's doing noon duty or in the lunchroom, they all help us support our students and help support learning in the district. Each person is essential to move us forward and to help our students be successful.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to board committees advisory council reports. Mark, we're back to you with personnel committee.
Back to me, yes. Well, as I said, on twenty-third of April, the personnel committee met and discussed the support staff recommendations, which we just finished approving, and in addition to that, we had a closed session where we discussed the upcoming new contracts for principals and administrators, as well as some discussion about the negotiations, negotiations over a new teacher contract.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? We'll move on to the policy committee meeting. Tracy?
Policy met April twenty-sixth and discussed the policy revisions that were in your board packet that we took action on tonight, all of which just keep us compliant with state law. And then additionally, we discussed making some changes throughout the policy manual to update job titles as, as they've changed, so that all of those won't come before you because we're just kind of going through and, just with the computer making those changes, so that those are consistent with where we're at.
Good. Thanks, Tracy, and thanks for your work in that area.
Mr. President, if I could, just one question real quick for Tracy, and I just thought this as I was kind of looking over. On the, on the graduation requirements with, you know, putting in the freshman year initiative, Tracy, with the one-quarter credit, I mean, I know this only applies to the new freshmen that were in oh six. I mean, are we just going to throw that line in here somewhere? Because obviously, this isn't, it would not be a graduation requirement for this year's seniors or next year's juniors.
Okay. And that, we didn't, that was already there. We didn't touch that part of it. What we were really looking at was focusing on the, the portion, the lower portion of that policy, knowing that we will be discussing that whole piece further in the fall.
Okay, I thought, so that was actually already there, the freshman year?
That was there.
Oh, I, I saw it in bold, I thought it was an addition, and so.
Right, no, no, that was already in the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move on to communications committee. Cindy?
The communications committee met. We did spend quite a lot of our time with the results of the survey that we saw tonight, and thanks again to Dr. Morris and company for all of the service that they render the district, and especially for the insights that we get from that. The result of a lot of that discussion and a lot of the questions that we sent back to Dr. Morris and his, his group, you, you heard the results of tonight already. We also are in an ongoing discussion about various ways that the community might be able to more readily communicate information to the board, email being one of the things that we're in discussion on, but no conclusions or recommendations for you at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Cindy? Move on to finance committee, which we've covered quite a bit.
We've covered really most of it in the new elementary referendum financing that was approved tonight. We spent a fair amount of time, though, talking also in that meeting about the use and rental of district space, and have not come to any suggestions or recommendations at this point for the board. However, we are working towards initially a philosophy, and have reviewed a number philosophies from other districts. And the elements around those philosophies that we discussed were that the district activities need to come first, that it should not cost the district any more money than it would normally cost to operate those, those, those facilities, that it should be open, we should, we want to have an open policy to the extent that the community has access to these facilities as reasonable. And we also want to make sure that we give consideration to nonprofit organizations, local groups versus outside groups and those, those types of things. So, you know, making some progress. We had a pretty good discussion, and more will be forthcoming, so.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions coming? I also want to just, in general, thank all the work that the committees do. That's a vital part of this board, and their well-functioning certainly helps our efforts at these board meetings. So thanks for the committee members, as well as the chairs of those committees. Oh.
Thank you.
So, sorry, Dick.
That's quite all right.
I preempted you.
That's quite all right.
Facilities and grounds.
We did meet, facilities committee, we did meet on the second of May, and without a lot of words, our major time has been on the new elementary school, and getting it positioned to the point that we could submit it to the board tonight for schematic approval, and then lengthy discussions on transition of the administrative space into the seven new, or seven remodeled classrooms of the high school. Talked about the middle school field, looks to be in good shape, and I see Dan's here tonight, but it looks like that grass has taken and taken really well. The track itself is yet to be striped, and that'll be done probably yet this month. Hudson Boosters came in front of us, looking for a little better partnering in terms of the varsity softball field, and, and we have a really good working relationship with Boosters, and doing a great job in terms of the varsity baseball field, and looking for a little further dialogue and discussion on improving the varsity softball field. The traditional summer projects coming up, mainly roofing, we've got some carpeting going in, carpet replacement, but really not any major projects this summer, much like what we had last summer, other than the administrative offices and the conversion of the seven classrooms at the high school.
Thank you, Dick.
I have a comment.
Yep.
Dick, what's your, as we looked at the survey results, talked about the new high school, is there any thoughts on, on just at least doing, starting to do an exploration on kind of best high school design and things like that, and not that, just as a starting point? I know there's, there's, this is a long process, you know, we need to embark on, you know, with community input and things like that. Was it worth starting to kind of, is there enough time right now with everything doing with the elementary school to kind of at least start the process? I think that's more of a, I don't know necessarily there's a, I'm looking for a response, I'm just going to throw it out there.
I'll give you a response. I, I, sooner rather than later. I, I think that there's some concepts out there that relate both to delivery of curriculum and as well as bricks and mortar, that I think can support what your group is doing for twenty twenty-five. I, I, I think we should begin that, and probably a good appropriate place is, is the facilities committee to look at what's out there conceptually.
And I still need to look at it, but, you know, I think there's some interaction there with the twenty twenty-five team as well, and I don't know exactly how we do it, but I do think there's some, there's a, there's a ability to kind of leverage both of our committees for, for that. And the second point is just a net for, that's a kind of open net for looking at summer projects. I, you know, every time I walk into the high school, I just think that the grounds around the entry into the high school, right? You know, putting out some, putting out some new bark and things like that, and, you know, this is the high school we have right now, I just thought, you know, maybe we could take a little, a little TLC around the entry into the high school. So.
So noted.
I, I would like to just comment that on the facilities and grounds agenda, Brian, we're thinking in the same way it said for the next meeting. It talks about secondary, looking at a process for conversation about secondary solutions. And, you know, although we saw in the data about the, the last vote and referendum, it said high school, certainly, I just want to point out, when we say high school, it sounds like that's the only issue that we have with enrollment, and certainly, as the task force looked at, and I know in your comments, you're, you're considering that we also have enrollment issues that we need to address at the middle school that are coming up and at the high school. So looking at that solution, I just encourage us to think of that secondary solution so that we can include both.
Certainly, when I'm talking about that, it's, you know, there's some dominoes here, and so, thanks.
Yeah, I, I respect your comments, and that may affect more than appropriate, I think, in terms of timing.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Any other comments, questions? If not, I don't believe there's any citizen request to speak, so we'll move on to item thirteen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move that we adjourn to closed session.
I'll second.
Can, could you enhance that motion, please, Cindy?
Pursuant to the law, in the way that it's stated in the agenda, which says, to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight, five subsection one, for the purpose of C, considering employment and compensation of principals, associate principals, coordinators, district administrators, and individual support staff members, and also E, for the purpose of discussion of bargaining of the teacher's contract.
Thanks, Cindy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Holland, aye.
Habishaline, aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Minna kai.
Trinahoy, aye.
Crimmins, aye.
Bell, aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for attending.